Okay, welcome. I'd like to call this May 14th, 2018 council meeting in order. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Colosar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Parnell, KB.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move the minutes of the meeting of April 23rd is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the approval of the minutes. The clerk, please call the roll on the approval of the minutes.
Lamb.
Say yes.
Lamb?
I'm thinking.
Oh.
Yes.
Parnell, KB.
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting this evening and have several items on the agenda. Will again meet in two weeks. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Colosar.
Thank you, Mr. President. As of right now, there is not a Health, Safety and Sanitation meeting scheduled. We did talk a little bit tonight about the LST levy possibly in the future and different options for it. There is a LST advisory meeting this Thursday at 8:00 a.m. at Medina Hospital. This will be my last chance to talk about Health, Safety and Sanitation. I just want to thank all the special responders and the Sanitation Department for all their efforts in this community. They make a big part of this community and we're very grateful for everything they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, no meeting scheduled right now.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Streets and Sidewalks, Tonnell Levy has scheduled a meeting for June 19th, just prior to a budget meeting.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mrs. Parnell, KB.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. Request for council action. We have several items for finance. We have 1894 budget amendments, 1895 transfer request for the Law Library Fund, 1896 transfer request for the Railroad Fund, 1897 transfer request for the MCRC capital contribution, 1898 transfer request for the Annual Parking Fund, 1899 ODOT cooperative purchasing for the Rock Salt, 18100 revocable use permit for the Ohio Real Title ground sign, 18101 accepting donations for the Police Department K-9 program, 18102 adopting 2018 strategic plan update, 18103 discussion for the EMS levy renewal update, 18104 second amendment to the agreement with Medina County Joint Parking Facility, 18105 revocable use permit for 226 South Court Street. And for Special Legislation Committee, we have 18106 City of Medina Gender Neutrality. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a Ward 3 and 4 meeting last week, I believe, and one of the issues that was raised was persons walking dogs without being on a leash. And per city ordinance 505.01 subsection B as in boy, the dogs are required to be on a leash if on property other than the owner's. This includes public parks, public sidewalks, surrounding yards and common areas. Another issue was bicycles. Bicycles are prohibited on the sidewalks at Public Square and each blocks approaching the square. The reason this ordinance is in effect is the doors of many of the businesses there open to the outside, so for the safety of the persons going in and out of the stores as well as for the bike riders, the bikes are not permitted on the sidewalks. Bikes, however, may be legally ridden in the roadway with traffic or walked on the sidewalks in the restricted areas. And the ordinance for that is 373.09 subsection A. Some bicentennial events coming up in May. May, the focus is on military conflicts our community was involved in. On Saturday, May 19th, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. is Armed Forces Day on Public Square with presentations from the Veterans Associations. On Saturday, May 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., there will be Civil War reenactments, speakers and many programs at Spring Grove Cemetery provided by Friends of the Cemetery. On Friday night, May 25th through Saturday, May 26th, there will be a Civil War encampment also at Spring Grove Cemetery. And for more details on that, you can go to their website, which is www dot friends of Medina cemetery dot com for further details. On Monday, May 28th, the Memorial Day Parade will emphasize Medina's history and military conflicts. The parade will start about 10:00 a.m. on the Public Square and ends with a ceremony at Spring Grove Cemetery. And I know Dave Taylor from the American Legion who organizes the Memorial Day Parade. They will literally have persons dressed in every military outfit from the Civil War to present, which should be something to see. And then the bicentennial website for further information is www dot Medina 200 dot com. And second to last, I'd like to thank Mark Colosar for your years of service and dedication to our community. Mark, you'll be greatly missed. We wish you, your family, and particularly your father, the best. He's got a great son and we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, I'd like to invite Assistant Fire Chief Doug Cruder up for a proclamation. This is a City of Medina proclamation. Appreciate the other fire members being here. And it reads, "Whereas Douglas A. Cruder has faithfully served his fellow citizens as a member of the Medina Fire Department for nearly 40 years, and whereas Douglas first served the community as a firefighter starting on January 28th, 1978, and whereas Douglas was promoted to Fire Lieutenant on May 20th, 1988, whereas Douglas was promoted to Assistant Fire Chief on July 1st, 1992, and continued service in that rank to the City of Medina and Mottville Township until his retirement on June 1st, 2017. Whereas during a long career in public service, he has made many contributions including being Chief of Hazmat of Medina County All Hazards Team, participation in the Medina County Arson Task Force, and the Medina County Career Center Advisory Committee for Fire Training. And whereas Douglas has held numerous state certifications, including Firefighter 2, Fire Safety Inspector, Fire Instructor, EMTA, Fire Officer 1, and Fire Officer 2, and whereas the City of Medina by this recognition wishes to express its great appreciation to Douglas for his service, loyalty, and dedication to the community on the occasion of his retirement. Now therefore, I Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby recognize and commend Douglas A. Cruder for your many years of service, dedicated service, and do hereby extend personal congratulations and best wishes for continued success in your life's pursuits." There you go. God bless you.
The only thing I'd like to say is that really after this many years, and when I first got on, nobody was doing, everybody worked in the city. Most, most people did. Everybody responded from around the square and that, and it was different back then. It was quite a bit different. But the fact that I could serve this long and as much good we did for a lot of people that weren't doing very good, it was, it was a pleasure for me. I just truly enjoyed what I did and I can only tell you, if you aren't in it, it'd be a good thing to get into because it's, it's just good. That's all I've got to say.
Congratulations.
Congratulations on your retirement and hope you have many more happy years. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, there's a budget meeting on Wednesday. Those are where the excitement happens. And there's a few items on the agenda that I'll address when I get, when we get there. I want to thank Doug for his years of service and then I want to address Councilman Colosar's departure. When I first ran for Finance Director, Mr. Colosar was running in Ward 1 and he had these signs that I had to walk through the yard to up to it to see it because he put everything he wanted to do on his yard sign. It was like in 10-point font. I remember these, that was in Ward 4 back in '01. And shortly after that, the city had to redraw the ward boundaries and Mr. Colosar didn't move, but his house became in Ward 3 instead of Ward 4. And he ended up being a Ward 3 Councilman for a number of years. And it's been a pleasure to work with you. And you know, the, the best thing you can say about somebody, I think, is I haven't always agreed with you, but I know that what you want to do is what you think is best for the City of Medina. And I always appreciated that. I'm going to miss that and I'm going to miss your cleanups because Councilman Colosar has organized these cleanups, usually a creek cleanup or a park cleanup every year for Earth Day. It's been a pleasurable service. It's a good thing that's been done for the community. He's put that together every year and glad you've done that. Good luck to you in your future endeavors. Sorry to see you go and enjoy the weather in Florida and hope everything goes well with you and take care of your dad.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report. Mark sure will be missed. It's all I can tell you. Been a real pleasure. And Doug, Chief, it's been good to be, work with you all the times that things come up and, and you've always been stalwart and pretty good common sense and you'll be missed at the Fire Department.
Thank you. Chief Kinney. Please, Chief.
Yeah, thanks. This Friday, May 18th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m., the Medina County Sea of Youth is having their event. It's a candlelight vigil dedicated to the men and women of law enforcement who served this community and the surrounding communities. It's for them putting their lives on the line and they keep the community safe. This will be at the Medina Performing Arts Center. This is a great event that the youth put a lot of work into. It's featuring the Celtic Eagle Pipe Band, the Medina High School Encore, the Claggett Middle School Choir, Brunswick City Schools, and the Hinckley Elementary School Choir. Again, it's at the Performing Arts Center this Friday at 7:00 p.m. And this is all in honor for Police Memorial Week, which is May 13th through May 19th, which is this week. Mark, it's been a short period of time since I've been here in my current position. I truly appreciate the support that you've given me in this position. I wish you and your family good luck in Florida. Thank you very much. Assistant Chief, congratulations. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. This Friday, May 18th, we will be welcoming four new businesses to the City of Medina in conjunction with Main Street and the Medina Chamber of Commerce. First, at 10:00 a.m., we will start out at Bumblebee Village at 707 North Court Street. That's a new daycare that will be opening, 10:00 a.m. And then at 2:00, we'll come back down to the square for Elemental Boutique at 45 Public Square. They're located inside Bella Sorella Salon in Suite 4, which is the Arcade Victoria. At 4:00 will be the Molly Watson Photography, new business at 30 Public Square up on the second floor. And then at 5:00, grand opening for 17 Public Square Restaurant and Bar. And the address is 17 Public Square, so it shouldn't be too hard to find. So, pretty excited about those new businesses, so if you're available, please join us. Also, the city is working in conjunction with the Ohio Means Jobs Medina County Office and the United Way Employing Medina County Initiative for a summer job fair, which will be held on Thursday, June 28th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Medina County District Library. We are in the process of contacting businesses that have job openings and as council is aware, we had quite a few companies expand last year and new companies coming in. So, we've got a lot of job openings, especially in our manufacturing sector as well as our service industry. I'd like to also congratulate Doug. I didn't get to know you or work with you, but hey, you're retiring and I'm jealous, so good luck to you. And to Councilman Colosar, one of the things that I've always admired about you is your passion for the environment and for recycling and the Champion Creek Cleanup. So, I think those were the things that we always shared in common. And I wish you the best to you and your family in Florida. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mendo, Planning and Community Development Director.
I have no report other than to say congratulations, Doug, on your retirement. And Mark, I congratulate you on your long and enthusiastic community, service to the community and you will certainly be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to remind our residents, as we're coming into severe weather season, the city is covered by four tornado sirens, if you will. I have fielded some questions, concerns about the volume and adjusting them. These are automatically triggered by the National Weather Service or manually by the Sheriff's Office. We can't adjust the volume. One of the residents said that she couldn't hear them in her home. They're not designed for that. They notify you of a storm coming if you're outside, so you can take shelter when you're away from your phone or your TV. So, that's the whole purpose, but they do get tested every Saturday and they should be well-equipped if something happens. Mr. Colosar, it's been great working with you and I hope the best for your father and I've been there doing the right thing, spending some time with him. And Doug, sorry it took so long to get you squared away, but it's been great working with you and you built the foundation that we're all working off of today and we thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick updates from the Medina Rec. First, the Memorial Outdoor Pool is scheduled to open Sunday, May 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., pending on the weather conditions, of course. We are running an early bird 10% off membership sale for the outdoor pool, starting on Tuesday, May 22nd through Memorial Day. You can pick up a flyer at the Medina Rec or visit the Friends of the Memorial Park and Pool booth at the Civil War Encampment on Saturday, May 26th. Lastly, our next rec advisory board will be this Thursday, May 17th, at 7:30 at the rec center. And then Doug, I want to congratulate you on your retirement. Congratulations. And Mark, just all your service, all your years of service is, you know, I'm just, I can't thank you enough for everything you've done for me over the years and best wishes to your family. Just a quick story, I wasn't going to tell it, but it's kind of funny. I worked at the cemetery when I first started and, well, garbage and then cemetery. Mark volunteered one time to help us for Memorial Day and we were shoveling mulch. And I literally, he walked up next to me and grabbed a pitchfork and we were going to pitch a, pitch some mulch onto the trees and I turned around, Mark was gone. And I remember looking around going, where the heck did Mark go? And he was in the pond fishing out baby geese to save them so they wouldn't drown because they couldn't get out of there. So, that's, that's all I'll always remember, Mark in that pond. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. Project updates. Recently, a pavilion, 24 by 24 pavilion was completed at Reagan Park adjacent to our basketball court. That is now available for rent to the public. And we've had quite the extensive project going on for several weeks over at Greenwood Park. We recently completed construction of six dugouts, put a new roof and siding on the concession stand at softball fields. And in a couple of weeks, we'll be repaving the entrance to Greenwood Park from Stirbridge all the way back to the splash pad. So, anticipate that project completing here shortly after Memorial Day. The splash pads at Greenwood Park and Ray Mellert Park will be turned on Saturday, May 26th, weather permitting. Those will come on at 11:00 o'clock at Greenwood and noon at Ray Mellert and will run until 8:00 p.m. And lastly, Doug, I want to congratulate you on your retirement. It's been a pleasure working with you on the few tree damage calls that you responded to. And Mark, just wanted to, you know, extend my best wishes to your family. It's been a pleasure working with you on the creek cleanups, your input on park development. Even though we didn't always see eye to eye, we always came to a good resolution. And you're always having passion about trees and residents' concerns. I appreciate your comments and your commitment to the city over the years. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report and best wishes to both Mark and Doug.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick announcement, late last week, Harding Street was opened. It had been closed for reconstruction associated with the ODOT project on 42. And following the theory that when one door opens, another one closes, today Forest Meadows was closed and it'll be closed for 30 days. It's being reconstructed. Doug, I would say congratulations. It was great always working with you. I hope you enjoy retirement. And Mark, got a chance to work with you for many years and it's been a pleasure and honor. You're truly passionate about a lot of things and I know every, everything you're passionate about is because you think it's going to improve the city and I always respected that. I'll miss you. Good luck. I'll even miss those almost daily 4:30 phone calls.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Pat took my thunder. It was also, don't forget the 11:30 phone calls when he'd go to lunch, never while he was working. It was always while he was on break. Right, Mark? So much to say. Where do I start, right? Anyway, you, you were good to work with. You were definitely passionate, as everyone here down the line reiterated, truly a public servant. And your, your ward will greatly miss you. And so, the ones that don't know you will, they'll know. Anyway, that's all I have. And Chief, too, congratulations. Someday we'll get there as well, so enjoy your retirement and good luck to your family, Mark.
Thank you. Notices, Communications and Petitions, there are none. Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public who have been permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All members, all comments should be directed at the chair and a reasonable time, approximately five minutes, will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Oh, you do. Come on up.
Is it working yet? I just wanted to say, I forgot one thing that I should have said and that's about my wife who's put up with me for 40 years of this. Forty, yeah, more years than you'd expect, but yeah. So, she needed to be told that, so.
You're very lucky. Anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, introduction and considerations, ordinances, resolutions. We have ordered in 78-18, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of $8,670 to the Medina County Society of Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, SPCA, for animal-related services for the year 2018. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this amount here, 8670, represents a 2% increase over the 8,500 that we gave last year. Hub Marcus, one of the directors, and I meet on a regular basis to review the accounts, the, to review how things are going, what they're doing to generate funds on their own. And the, this, this, the society here has made a dramatic increase in the way they're operating, or an improvement, I should say, in the way they're operating. And I recommend that we vote yes on this.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mayor Hamel?
Just briefly, Mr. Councilman, Council President, Coin. I'd just like to thank Paul for his efforts. Due to his interaction with the SPCA, what we get now each year is a detailed date, location, a specific address, what the animal was they dealt with, what, what they did with the animal. And that was a lot of data that before we would just get a number saying in the past year, we've, we've handled X amount of animals times an average fee and, and that was difficult for us to analyze and agree to pay. So, through Councilman Rose's efforts, this is a much better process and I thank him.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? The clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of ordinance.
Parnell, KB.
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, KB.
Still yes.
Thank you. Resolution 79-18 passes seven zero.
Ordnance 80-18, an ordinance amending ordinance number 60-18 passed April 9th, 2018 relative to the awarding of a contract for the construction of a new calibarium wall at the Spring Grove Cemetery. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the ordinance and emergency clause. Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is to increase the previously authorized amount of $60,000 to $72,000 for the project. When we initially requested funding for this project, it was overlooked and we did not include the contingencies. So, therefore, we need to increase the amount so we are able to award a bid up to that dollar amount. The reason for the emergency clause is so that we can get this bid and the wall built as we are running out of niche space at Spring Grove Cemetery. I did want to note that the cost for the project will be recouped through future niche sales. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution.
Parnell, KB.
Yes.
Oops, I'm sorry. Start over again. Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, KB.
Still yes.
Thank you. Resolution 79-18 passes seven zero.
Ordnance 80-18, an ordinance amending ordinance number 60-18 passed April 9th, 2018 relative to the awarding of a contract for the construction of a new calibarium wall at the Spring Grove Cemetery. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the ordinance and emergency clause. Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is to increase the previously authorized amount of $60,000 to $72,000 for the project. When we initially requested funding for this project, it was overlooked and we did not include the contingencies. So, therefore, we need to increase the amount so we are able to award a bid up to that dollar amount. The reason for the emergency clause is so that we can get this bid and the wall built as we are running out of niche space at Spring Grove Cemetery. I did want to note that the cost for the project will be recouped through future niche sales. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 80-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 81-18, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund advances. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a $12,000 advance into the Cemetery Mausoleum Fund. It is to pay for the $12,000 increase to cover contingencies that Mr. Worley spoke of. Advances are temporary, and as Mr. Worley said, we intend to recoup this money through sales of the niches, and we will repay this advance at that time.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the role on adoption of ordinance.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 81-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 82-18, an ordinance amending ordinance number 418 past January 8, 2018, relative to the bids and awarding of a contract for the East Smith Road Reconstruction Project. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Previously, council authorized us to complete a bid for the East Smith Road Reconstruction Project. We completed that process, and the lowest and most responsible bid came in 3.8% higher than the amount authorized by council. So we're asking that this increase, which is approximately $50,000, that would bring the total project cost to $1,419,780. I wouldn't mind, council, that we are getting a $450,000 grant for this project, so that will help. Asking for the emergency clause because we'd like to get the contract signed and the work started as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any further discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 82-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 83-18, an ordinance amending ordinance number 30-18 past February 26, 2018, relative to the bids and awarding of a contract for the Guilford Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. Similar to the previous one, earlier council had authorized us to complete the bid process for the Guilford Boulevard Reconstruction Project. We completed that process, and the lowest and most responsible bid came in, it was 2% higher than the amount authorized by council. Therefore, we're coming to ask to modify the budget for this project to increase it by $13,657, to a new total of $677,938. Want to remind council that this project also has a grant. This one's for $605,000. Out of that, $677,000 cost will be covered by a grant. Emergency clause because we'd like to sign the contract and get the project started as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any further discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Clerk, please call the role on adoption of emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, KB?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the role on adoption of the ordinance?
Parnell, KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 83-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 84-18, an ordinance amending ordinance number 177-17 past December 11, 2017, amendments to the 2018 budget. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are a few increases here. There's a donation, and then the case management system, which, as we discussed, it finances court funds. There are also donations for the K-9 program, and then a grant issue. Then there are a whole slew of appropriation adjustments, which, to explain to people back home, that's where the department is just moving from one line to another, but the total is the same. And then there are some reductions.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the role on adoption of the ordinance.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 84-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 85-18, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund advances. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
These aren't advances. These are transfers.
Oh, certain fund transfers. I'm sorry. I'm so used to saying advances.
And the difference is transfers are permanent. Advances are temporary and will be repaid. The transfer is, one is in the Law Library Fund posting issue from last year. The railroad, there's a transfer to the railroad fund, which is due to our agreement with the customers of the railroad that the city owns, that the city contributes to that as the customers do as well. In the rec center, we're transferring money to the capital fund. That's per the agreement we have with the school for the operation of the rec center that we each contribute $100,000 per year to the capital fund to maintain that facility. And then finally, a transfer into the parking fund. The parking fund does not and never has, to my knowledge, made sufficient money to cover the operations of parking, so we have to transfer money in there every so often to cover those operations.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the role on adoption of the ordinance.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 85-18 passes 7-0.
Resolution 86-18, a resolution authorizing participation in Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase of sodium chloride or rock salt. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it to this resolution.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the resolution and the emergency clause. Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason for the request, the emergency clause, is our clerk of council, Kathy Patton, received this request from ODOT on April 26. So we turned around and filed the request for council action, and it has to be returned by May 18, which is a very short window, and it's for our annual purchase of salt. So appreciate the council's consideration and taking this straight from finance to council. I know they don't like to do that, but...
We're glad to help you out. Any further discussion on the resolution and/or emergency clause? Clerk, please call the role on the emergency clause.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
I think I skipped somebody. Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Who'd I miss? All right. Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the resolution?
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Resolution 86-18 passes 7-0.
And ordinance 87-18, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept one highway easement necessary for the East Smith Road Reconstruction Project. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. In order to complete the East Smith Road Project, we do need a couple of easements. This is one of them. This is for the property at the southwest corner of Smith and Broadway. It's a highway easement granted by the property owner to the city.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Ordinance 87-18 passes 7-0.
Council comments. I guess I'll start off with council comments. Well, first, remember, there's a budget meeting, and Mark, you're still around. So these budget meetings are very exciting, and you should come. It's this Wednesday, as Keith mentioned, at 5:30, May 16. Second, I'd like to have Mark come up to the front real quick for a little presentation. It's like Christmas. Well, Mark, you've been on council for, what, about 14 years now? And you served Ward 3, you know, very well. You're very passionate about your approach to government. You're very direct in your opinions, which has been very refreshing for most people because, as you know, most people aren't genuine, and Mark is very genuine about his opinions. And he's very active in his ward. He walks his ward. He drives his ward. We get a lot of information about his ward. Mr. Pacoli can vouch for that as he's been out there. He's been a very good advocate for the environment, a very good advocate for animals in general. And a couple of the last things that he presented to council is a leash law that he wants to look over, tethering law, that is. And then he also wants to look at preserving the parks, which is very important for our community, and he's also been a great advocate for that. We have here a little gift for Mark, as you can see. He doesn't have to open up now, I guess. But there's a couple cards for him, and this is in appreciation for all your years of service to the city of Medina, and we wish you well in your new venture. So thank you. Do you have anything you want to tell us?
You all know me. I get all emotional sometimes when I'm speaking from my heart, so I'm going to keep this short and sweet. It's been a pleasure, 14 years, a third of my life, been up here helping a city I love. And it's been a pleasure to work with all of you. Like we said, we don't ever always see eye to eye, but we work together to move forward with this community, and that's what's important. So I thank each one of you for your hard work in this administration, to work with us, because I know we can be trouble sometimes to work with. But we all have the passion, and again, we all want the community to move forward. John, first time I ever got interested in council, John was appointed at the same time I first put my name in the ring to get on council. So that was back in 98. So it's been some time, and it goes to Jim Shields, too, who I ran against and worked for, like Mr. Durham talked about. And I was, tried one more time to get appointed, and then finally, the fourth time, I was appointed, and I appreciate John, Jim, Danny, John Wetzel, who was out in the audience. I appreciate the opportunity to, you guys give me a chance, Linda Hoffman-Joseph, and Pam Miller, and even Jane Lever, I'm sure, had to give a nod to put me up here in this chair. And it's been a pleasure. I know everybody recognizes me for my environment and cleaning up the creeks and all that, but it's so important. It's just the basic threads of our community that we need to look out for. If you don't have healthy neighborhoods, you don't have a healthy community. And, you know, the ward meetings, I started in Ward 3. Now we do citywide, and it gives residents a chance to come out and talk to their elected officials, and not up here in front of the camera, but, you know, in your neighborhoods in a casual setting. There's a lot of things that I'm very grateful for, and I just appreciate the opportunity to serve a city that's been so good to me.
All right, Mark. They want you to open it.
I think you should open it, Mark.
You need to open it.
Come on. All right.
And Megan, what did you tell him that he got all the way through this?
He did. You don't need to open the cards right now. Just open the gift.
Hold on. One more thing.
You know, I couldn't have done this without my family.
You were almost there.
I spoke too soon, huh? It's just a little something you take to Florida to remember Medina. Put it in a place where you're going to see it every day, and it's not the bathroom. Additional council comments?
Mr. President? Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Laura.
I would like to say, you know, congratulate, well, good luck to you moving to Florida, and I would be happy to take over your creek cleanup. One of the other things that, you know, we had discussed just in a meeting, you had talked to me about how you recycle and so forth. I'm a very competitive person. I thought, well, if he can do that, let's see what I can do. So because of you, we now recycle everything at home, everything at the store, and I'm down to half a container of trash. So that was due to you. But I also wanted to, we actually are doing a community cleanup in Ward 1. May 27, between 10, and I hope it will take no longer than two hours. If you come to Ray Meller Park, we'll have coffee and bagels, and hopefully, we'll get